Next, then, if the council will turn its attention to the minutes of January 18th. Are there changes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as distributed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Field, second by Ms. Kirby. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Minutes are approved as distributed. Next, report on solid waste collection bids. Mr. Stone?
I won't go over everything that I went over last night, but just to bring everyone up to date.
May moan.
On January 4th, we opened the bids for solid waste collection for the city of Berea. We had four bidders that bid on the solid waste collection contract for the city, our One of the bidders was immediately eliminated because of price. As we talked to that company, and let me say going into this, we probably had four of the best bidders that you could have had for any project that we've ever done. The reviewing staff, reviewing committee of the staff identified the principal areas of the bid package. We then interviewed each of the three remaining bidders, having to do with their availability, financial stability of their company, recycling, same things that I mentioned at our last council meeting. We also made trips to Waste Connections landfill and Bia's landfill, both of them being very, very good operations. Then presented our thoughts to the council in a written report as to how each of our interviews and visits to landfills went, and basically asked the council to review that, and also then to look at the pricing structure that each of the bidders had put forth. Last night, about an hour and a half or two-hour meetings, the council reviewed our presentation. I also reviewed the bid package and came to some conclusions. So, Mr. Burnside, I will ask you to report on last evening's meeting, because you chaired that with the council.
Yeah, last evening, we met, we did, as Randy, Mr. Stone has pointed out, we did consider the review that the staff had done. We conducted our own conversations as well. The groups are there, the bidders were there, we helped answer a lot of questions we have. It was a very, very tough decision. They all were very competent and capable, and so it was a really tough decision. But at the end of that, in our own discussion and in when the, what we looked at, the different options in terms of short-term, long-term contracts, in terms of pricing and whatever, I'd like to make a motion this evening to award the solid waste bid to Waste Connection and Legacy Carton, and to have Mr. Giver to draw up an ordinance to that effect.
Motion then by Mr. Burnside to award the bid to Waste Connections. Is there a second?
Also.
Second by Mr. Belando. Discussion? All in favor then of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Waste Connections, it is. Anything further?
That's all, Mr. Bear.
Before we move into the presentation of the utilities, Carla, did you want to... We had one citizen who wanted to mention matter not on the agenda. This would be the time to do it.
I'm Carla Gilbert, and I'm representing the Berea Arts Council this evening. I'm here to offer an invitation. We are celebrating our 25th year, which is amazing for a town the size of Berea to have an arts council, as well as let it survive for 25 years. It began in 1986 as a result of a three-part volunteer from the citizens of the community, help from the Berea College, and then financial support from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Arts Cabinet. And we have been looking toward this 25th year as a way of really celebrating our arts, reaching out in partnership to individuals, to groups. The mission of the council is to inspire a passion and love for the arts as a force for enhancing the quality of life of individuals and the community, and we do this by encouraging creative expression, participation in and appreciation of the arts, and by coordinating and presenting community art activities. It seems very likely and apt that the mission of the Berea Arts Council is the same as the city in terms of the welfare of its citizens, of finding ways in which we might encourage, enhance the life of our citizens. And so I am here to invite you to consider, as you look in your deliberations, of ways that you can really partner with us. We have just started, I guess, really looking at partnering, and the first event will be a Loyal Jones Soup Supper, Sunday Come to Meaton. You may know that Loyal received the 2010 Kentucky Heritage Arts Award. And so the Appalachian Center, and Berea Arts Council, and Union Church, which he's a part of, all three of those, are partnering to do this roast. And so you are invited, and I have invitations for you, to come at 5 to 7 on Sunday.
Union Church.
Union Church. And we're going to have mountain music and people from the community, and if you know a story that you'd like to share about Loyal, that'd be a good time. We want to roast him, we don't want to fry him. We just want, you know, to have some fun about it. From the inception of our council, we have worked from working with primarily just children in 1986, moving to the art space where we have gallery space, and galleries came up. The hands that you see around town were not meant to be a permanent exhibit, but they are because of, I guess, popular demand. And our primary activities is last year, this is pretty impressive, I think, number of youth benefiting from our work, 1,800; number of adults benefiting, 5,000; number of artists participating, 390; number of members in our Berea Arts Council, 250; number of volunteers; total number of paid attendance, 2,600; and the number of free attendance or participants for the last year. So we have Walk with the Arts, where we have 1,000 kids from Madison County come to Indian Fort and circulate among 16 different artists. We have Quilt Extravaganza, which brings in a lot of people. We have Chilly Night Out, garden tours, summer camps for kids, readings, quilts with a kid and exhibit, all other kinds of community art show. My invitation to you is to think ways in which we might be more involved with some of the other dimensions of our city life, and to partner with you in that. I would like to distribute this little blurb just to impress you even more, but also and then to invite you to Loyal's roast. Are there any questions?
Questions for the arts council. We thank you for the invitation, and did you tell us a date for that?
Yes, it is February 13th.
13.
Week from Sunday.
Afternoon.
Week from Sunday.
It is at Union Church from 5 to 7 in the community room, and there is access to the And we hope it will be just a fun time, and the numbers of Berea community will indeed come out and have a good time as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, chill, ma'am. I have to walk back the other way, so I'm busy.
Thank you.
Next then, Donald Blackburn, utility orientation.
Change order. Couple of items of business.
Donald, if I could ask you to hold up, I'm sorry, I skipped over the utility roof change order.
Yes, I was going to ask that that be done.
Oh, well, okay.
That's what I was.
Very appropriate.
There are a couple of items of business, if you don't mind, passed around last night, or Randy passed around last night, a change order that, if you recall, well, of course, some are new. We did put a roof on, a new roof on Building 1 and on the office down at the municipal utility building. The contract was for $447,000. What we did was tore off the old roof on the, on Building 1. We tore that off, put new insulation on, sloped it slightly so that it drains, added some more drain lines, and now can actually be in the building in the dry. So that worked out well. What came up during the process, the metal decking of the old roof, we knew some of it was bad, we knew that some of it had deteriorated to where we were going to have to take it out. What we didn't realize was the sag, that there's some of the panels had started sagging in between the joists. And when we built our roof up on top, we were actually building pits and holes for it to hold water. And so we said, we can't do that, asked that the contractor tear out more of the corrugated metal decking so that we could get the roof that we're supposed to have. This change order reflects that, it's 42,000, 43,000, something like that, of where they actually had to go in and take old decking off and replace it with the new metal decking before they could put the roof on. So I would ask that you approve the change order so that we can proceed on.
I make a motion that we approve. Second. Motion by Mr. Little, second by Mr. Burnside to approve the requested change order. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Change order is approved.
Thank you. A second item of business I just put on, on the desk in front of you, is a memo regarding a sewer line that is being donated to our, to our system. What we do, anytime a developer, builder extends the sewer line, they put it in at their expense, they, we then test the manholes and the lines, and then they give us those lines with easements or anything else that we need in that regard. To keep Gadsby, which is the governmental accounting system, straight on keeping our books straight, we have to bring that in as contributed capital. And tonight, I'll be asking John, John Parsons extended the line. This is, what he was doing was back in Central Park, in the back part of Central Park, there's some development is going up there, and he thought it'd be an opportunity to go ahead and get the line over to his property. And so there's no subdivisions, there's no buildings going on at this time, but with the extension, he did have to donate the line to us so that we could maintain it, keep it. So there is, I think it was $32,000 of contributed capital. This would be the official record that we've accepted that, that line for our, for our system.
Now, I have a motion then to accept the John Parsons sewer line extension.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Farmer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fields. Questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. The capital is accepted as valued.
I appreciate that. I've been told to be brief with my orientation. Believe me, I will run through this probably faster than, than you know. This has been a lot of fun, actually. We, that, when, if I'd had to give my presentation four weeks ago, when the first group gave theirs, it would have been a piece of paper and me reading off of it. But then I saw the partner heads come up with all these PowerPoints and all this stuff, and I had to go ask, where's, where's my PowerPoint? I've never done one, you know? So I've learned more about computers and software in the last two weeks than you can imagine. So I've tried to put together a little PowerPoint presentation. I did have some help. I'll introduce her in a minute. Our little trick is we color-coded the different areas, so as you go from one color code to another, you'll, you'll know that you're going from electric to water to something like that, you know? And then had some fun with some of the other stuff, too. Let me start off with a little bio. It is a bit awkward to, to give this group a bio. We all seem to know each other and are friends with each other, but I'll try to give you some information that perhaps you didn't know. I was born in Louisville, Kentucky while my dad was in medical school. He had an Army deferment, and when he got through medical school and his internship, he had to join the Army, and we lived in Okinawa for two and a half years, from the time that I was seven years old to 10 years old. And you talk about an exciting time, you're on, you're at an officer's quarters, and, you know, you go next door, knock on the door, and there's a kid your age, and if he's not home, you go to the next door and you're knocking. So it was, we enjoyed that. I attended college in Lexington, married and started my family there before returning to Berea, raised three daughters here in Berea, and I can assure you, there's no finer place for that. The two older daughters are both successful engineers in their own right, they're both married, and each of them have two children, thus my four grandchildren. My youngest daughter, Stacy, who's back here, graduated law school, she's joined the Army Jack Corps. Sorry. And Friday, I'm taking her down to where she's going to be assigned to Afghanistan. I'm more torn about it than she is. She's the one that's going over. Sorry about that. Even though I was on the six-year plan, I did earn a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from UK. I went back and earned a Master of Civil Engineering with the emphasis in construction management, and I've got an MBA degree from Eastern. Ms. Kirby and I went to some classes together, I think we even copied off each other's homework, so. I started with the Berea Sewer Commission in September of 1983. I think, other than Mr. Gilbert, I'm the longest continually hired employee of the city at this time. Now, there are others that have gone and come back that have more time, but... So you could say that I grew up a sewer rat and loved the name. I think that it's very appropriate. Late in 2004, I was asked and accepted the position to manage the combined utilities, which I've been doing ever since. We celebrated our sixth anniversary this past January of the 27th. I would like to point out that, that I am not the first Blackburn to manage in the utilities. My grandfather, William Bill Blackburn, ran the heat and power for Berea College for many years. And even though he only had a third-grade education, he came to Berea with the promise that his children would be allowed to go to Berea College, and most of them did. So you could say that Berea's been a big part of my life, and I only hope that I have contributed something to make it an even better place for others. With that, we'll try to move, maneuver through this on the utilities. As I said in my introduction, we were formed in January of 2005. We're a combination of three entities, the Berea College Utilities, which was the water and electric, the Berea Sewer Commission, and I consider the third entity, the City of Berea, because as a sewer commission, we were a separate entity, and coming in as a department also required some adjustment and change for all of us. Our offices are at 200 Harrison Road. We have a total of 35 employees. In the utility administration portion of it, there's seven in billing and collection. Operations purchasing GIS has five, the electric distribution system has a total of seven, the water has a total of eight, and the sanitary sewer has a total of eight. And that, of course, all of those, of course, include line crews and, and plant crews. The main focus of our mission is to provide high-quality utility service to our customers and ratepayers. I didn't say citizens. We, our, our customers are the ratepayers, and I'll get into, a little more into what that means later on. We have approximately 5,100 electric customers, 4,000 water customers, including two wholesale accounts. We sell water to Garrett County Water District and to Southern Madison, well, I guess, Southern Madison Water District and Garrett County Water Association. They, between the two of them, they approximately have 5,500 customers. We produce the water for all of Southern Madison County, part of Garrett County, and a little portion of Rock Castle County. So we do, we do get our water spread out quite, quite far. We have 5,400 sewer customers, and we do all of the billing and collection in-house. Did you hear the electricity? Do you want to hear that again? Listen, listen. Did you hear the electricity?
This is going to be a long presentation.
In the electric, in red color, too, you got to see that, see. We have two substations, Rash Road Substation. The Rash Road Substation has, has two transformers that are in parallel with each other, one's a 20 and one's a 25 milli-volt ampere. There are four circuits at the Rash Road Substation and one spare. We added the spare a couple of years ago. What we intend to do with that spare is eventually tie the Rash Road Substation to the Lewis Street Substation, so that if we have a failure, we can move electricity back and forth between those. The Rash Road is a 12 KV system. Berea has actually two separate electric systems. This 12 KV and the other one, I'll get to when we get to the Lewis Street. The Rash Road serves about two-thirds of, of the system, 1,600 poles, 45 miles of line. The Lewis Street Substation, now next to the old Parker Seal Building, has got one 14 MVA transformer. It also has four circuits, and it is a 4 KV system. Thus, the, the two different voltages means that we've got two different systems. What, what we are wanting to do is to convert everything to the higher 12 KV system, and we've been doing that, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to projects. It's obviously about a third, there's about 1,100 poles and 31 miles of line. This is some information about the electric system from 2010, in, on the, well, on the screen, on the, how do I do this with two of them? This is the, is the customer billing information from last year. You can see that we have about 4,365 residential customers, but their total usage was almost half of the system total usage. The commercial and the industrial customers, you can see 29 million kilowatt-hours and 42 or 43 million kilowatt-hours for the industrial, for a total system of 138. On the other side is the billing from Kentucky Utilities. I went and changed it to, well, milliwatts, is that what I'm trying to say?
Megawatts.
Megawatts. I knew I wasn't saying it right. I went and changed it to megawatts to kind of shorten the number, megawatt-hours. The, the MWH is the megawatt-hours. You can see how, how the usage fluctuates as you go into springtime, people aren't using the air conditioners, heaters, so it gets down into less than 10, goes back up as they use the air conditioning season, goes back down in the fall, and then comes back up in the winter. The, the other column is the, is the megawatts peak factor, and, and that's the one that costs the money. You get, you get charged $10 and $12 per megawatt, and when you have that times 32,000, it gets pretty steep. So you can see that that also seems to be weather-related. We have, in fact, since we've been the utility, switched from a winter, from a summer peak to a winter peak. And when I say that, the, the bottom number on, the December 2010, the 32.5, that is, that is the highest demand usage that we used that, this past year. And that, that is reflective of one, one-hour period in the whole year that came that we had to use that much power at that time. And where I keep telling our people and other groups is, you have to build a system for the 32.5. You have to build the system to support whatever your highest peak is. Otherwise, you have your brownouts, your blackouts, and that kind of stuff. So we obviously want to try and work to reduce those peak loads, because they're more expensive, and they also are the drivers of what, of what you have to build your system toward. Thought I better put a little bit in about the KU relationship. We are a municipal wholesale customer of KU, we're one of 12. KU, because of its size and grandeur, I guess, deals with the, with FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We work jointly with the other 12 members in joint, in negotiation of contracts and other issues. We use Spiegel and McDermott, which is illegal, that's a Washington DC firm. We use RW Beck for engineering, they're a national firm also. And, and all, all 12 of us are, as well as other people, are members of the Kentucky Municipal Utility Association, so we meet quarterly, and at those quarterly meetings, we get an opportunity to meet with our consultants and to keep up with the issues that are going on with KU. They have switched, a few years back, they switched to a formula-based rates, and what this means is, is that at the end of their accounting year, they, they take numbers from certain categories and they stick it into this formula, and from that formula, they, they can determine what the rate is for the next year. It's obviously more complicated than that when we It's obviously more complicated than that when we get the volumes. There's about an inch thick of paperwork in how that formula was derived. We do have what I'm calling a pass-through tariff. If KU raises their rates, or lowers, let's just use our imagination and pretend, but we automatically pass that on through to the customer at the rate that they sent. So we don't have to, and part of the reason for that is, the change is in July, but we don't know what that change is until the 1st of May. So by the time you make the adjustments, we don't know what officially the change is until the 1st of May. By the time you make adjustments and go through ordinances and stuff, you would lose way too much, and so for that. Did you hear the water? Did you hear the water?
Was it a sewer? Was it a flow sewer?
No, 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 no. That was a rock being thrown in the water. That was a rock in the water. This, the second utility that we, of course, have is the water. In the picture, if I can get it to this. In the picture, you can see this bigger building, bigger portion, that's the new part of the water plant. This is the old part of the water plant, that everything inside of is new. And back over in here is the new chemical feed building. What you see up here is the DAF unit, and I'll talk a little more about that, and then the filters in the new part. See how it flows in, just like water. The raw water sources, there's four reservoirs, Owlsley Fork Reservoir, 151 acres and 654 million gallons of water stored. The key with Owlsley Fork is that it's got 4,900-acre drainage basin. And what that means, that's about a 30-to-1 ratio, so to speak, 31, 32-to-1. If the ground's saturated and the conditions are right, and it rains an inch in that area, the lake will rise 30 inches. So you can see that it can recharge itself very quickly with a couple of good rains. This past year, I hated that it became an election-type of thing, but when Owlsley Fork was down 10 or 12 feet, we weren't as concerned about it this year than we had been in prior years, because in prior years, when Owlsley Fork's down 10 or 12 feet, Cowbell Hall's down about 17 or 18 feet. And that's a lot of water out of it. But during the construction process, we increased the capacity of the pumping at Owlsley Fork. Before, we could not, we were always having to feed out of Cowbell and Owlsley Fork. Now, we've got enough pumping capacity that we can keep Cowbell full and pump directly from Owlsley Fork all the way into the station. So this year, when Owlsley was down 10 feet or so, Cowbell was full, and there was still really plenty of water. So it's just reservoir management has changed, and we're able to do that there. Bee Lake is behind the water plant, and in fact, it's the hydraulic drive for the water treatment plant. And what I mean by that is, is that it sits up a little bit higher than the plant does itself, and so the water pressure is actually what runs the water plant. So when we talk about, when we talk about we can't lose Bee Lake, we can't let it get down more than three or four feet to drop, because then we won't be able to operate our system. The water treatment plant was originally built in 1990 as a 4-million-gallon-per-day plant. It had four individual trident package plants. There was actually four individual processes within the plant, so it was very unconventional. When we got the water system, we added a chloramine unit. This is to meet some of the chlorine byproducts that are a big issue. I don't know if you recall, when we first took over, we were having to send out a lot of notices that said that things weren't going well in the water plant. We put this in and was able to eliminate those notices, but we could not meet our TOC removal criteria, which is another state regulation. However, because we were an unconventional-style plant, they did give us a waiver on that until we got the new plant built. In 2010, this past summer, we completed the upgrade expansion. It's now a 6-million-gallon-per-day plant. It's got the dissolved air flotation. That is a better system for us. It's relatively new stateside, but it's been used quite a bit in Europe. What it does is, you've got fine bubbles that are put into the water as it comes in, and some polymer mixed into, and you actually lift the material to the top. And if you think about it with us with reservoirs, you know, our floating type of material is algies and things like that. And so this brings it to the top, we're able to skim it off, then we can then send it through the five filters, and we're now meeting all of our parameter requirements. I did want to point out that we did put redundancy into the new plant. What redundancy means is, is that it's a 6-million-gallon-per-day plant, but there's actually two 3-million-gallon-per-day trains. So if one does happen to go down for some reason, we can still produce water. And we think that that gives us a much better latitude for operating and keeping our plant in shape. In 2010, we treated a total of 1 billion 51 million gallons for an average day of 2,880,000 or 2.88 million gallons per day. Our peak day was 3,863,000 gallons in a day. In selling to our customers, BMU customers received 388 million gallons. Garrett County Water received 31 million gallons. And Southern Madison Water District got 327 million gallons. We operated the plant last year a total of 5,186 hours, or about 14.2. That number is a little bit deceptive in that during the, obviously during the construction, we had to work cooperatively with the contractor, and the contractor cooperatively with us. There were times that we had to shut the plant down to allow them to do things. And so at the beginning of the year, we had a whole lot longer hours. Now, we're actually running the plant about 11, 11 and 1/2 hours a day, and we feel very good about that. At one point, we did run six days. In February during the construction, we ran 24 hours a day. In the water system, as I said, we've got a raw water pump stations, one at Owlsley Fork that we just upgraded, and we've got one at Cowbell Hall. We've got 3.5 million gallons of water storage. There's a 3-million-gallon ground storage tank at the water plant, and of course, a 500,000-gallon out here at the West End. Approximately 74 miles of line, and we recorded 117 water leaks repaired last year. That's the flush. This is the picture of the wastewater treatment plant. What you can kind of see here, the control building is on the left side. Behind that was the, was the aeration building, and then we've got our oxidation ditches and clarifiers. And if you notice here, again, there's two oxidation ditches, two clarifiers. We have the redundancy at this. And this is where, you see it kind of spiraled down? The plant, the wastewater treatment plant was originally built in 1987 as a 2.4 MGD plant. The oxidation ditch, it had an oxidation ditch with an inner-channel clarifier. What that meant was that the whole process was in the one ditch. It did give us some trouble at the beginning. We were able to work through those and do some stuff and got that changed around. Sludge disposal at that plant is by belt filter press, goes to the landfill. In 2005, at the very end of 2005, we completed the expansion and upgrade of the wastewater plant to, it's now a 4.3 million gallon. We took the clarifiers out of the ditches and put them in behind. We switched out. We no longer have chlorine disinfection. We've got ultraviolet disinfection out there. We increased the size of our belt presses so that we could move that material faster. That plant operates 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. We do not have an operator there the whole time. We only, we've got shift work, the people come in, but we can't turn it off. It has to run. And so obviously, the redundancy is important there, because if we do have a breakdown, we can switch it over. We have, and we discharge to Silver Creek. It's entirely coincidental, but out at the wastewater treatment plant, we processed a total of 1 billion and 53, or 54 million gallons this past year, with an average of 2.888. I had those same numbers at the water plant. That's just totally, totally coincidental. You can see the sludge volumes produced also. Brea averages about 10,454 pounds of sludge per day. I'll let you use your own word. The collection system has seven pump stations. They're listed there. Approximately 92 miles of sewer line and approximately 1,000 manholes. I wanted this to show you that Brea has a water cycle. This is where I was going to use my little pen, but I'll try to. Starting at the bottom, where the condensation, you start here at the bottom. You have the rain coming down. It collects in the, you can see the arrows. It collects in the reservoirs. We then bring it into the water plant. We treat it at the water plant. Once it gets treated, it goes out into the collection system. We're up at the top of the page there, where the tower, the water tanks are. Goes through your water meter and goes into your house. After you've used it at the house, it comes back out into the collection system, goes through perhaps some pump stations, and then comes back into the wastewater treatment plant. There, it gets divided up into two streams. One goes, is the sludge on the outside, where we dispose of it. The other, we disinfect, we aerate it, and we send it back out into the creek, and obviously it goes back into evaporation and goes all around again. We are able to do that whole process for about a half a cent a gallon. So that's, we, as I pointed out to you, we treated about a billion gallons at the water plant and a billion gallons at the wastewater plant, and we have about a $5 million budget to do water and the electric. About a half a cent a gallon to do that whole process. We also operate the landfill leachate treatment plant. It has a 20,000-gallon capacity. There's two of those storage tanks in behind the building there. Each of them are 10,000 gallons. That would be about, we operate it about three days a week, 24 hours a day when we do operate it, until we get the tanks emptied out. Wanted to put a little, just show you briefly some of the budget numbers. This, our total income for the utilities will be slightly under 15 million gallons. I know it's hard to read, and I apologize for that. The total, the $15 million, not gallons. The total, I wish I could do it that way. The total expenses are also about $15 million. We do have about $2 million in debt service altogether. That would indicate that we have a deficit spending of about $2.5 million. Mr. Jennings, every year, has to break this apart and explain that there is actually, because of the way that we're having to put this and present it, there's actually some double numbers. In other words, we're on enterprise, what's called enterprise fund accounting. Susan alluded to that in her presentation. In enterprise fund accounting, you have depreciation expense, because it's like a business. It allows the government to operate like a business. It's essentially what enterprise fund accounting is. I'm excited about some changes that we're going to make in the way that this is going to be presented to you all. Susan has been working on trying to present it more in the accounting terminology and accounting way that an enterprise fund should be accounted for. And we're going to go ahead and start that with the amended budget, so you'll see those changes when you come up. What that does is, it'll give us a more truer picture of what the utilities are doing, and for Mr. Little, it'll help him with a better, I think, a better understanding of rates and why we have the rates we do, because you are eliminating some of what I call the funny money, some of the stuff that you have to show that doesn't really end up in the accounting the way it should. Projects. I know you all have been through all of this. We, too, have a list of projects. We are about 90% complete with the scaffalcane conversion. What I'm talking about there is, remember I told you we had two different systems, a 4 KV and a 12 KV system? We're trying to bring them all, everything, to a 12 KV system. And so a conversion, you go in, you change out all the transformers, you put in what they call a dual-voltage transformer. You install that, set it to the system that you're operating. Then, when you get everything in there, you can go in, shut down for a couple hours, go around and switch them all to the higher voltage, turn it back on, and you've eliminated the lower voltage system. We're doing the same thing in Dixie Park, and then we've got a couple of areas like Boba Link and things like that that we're going to be doing. I talked about the Rash Road Lewis Street Substation connection. We're still working on that. We're getting ready to install streetlights in Bradford Estate and Fox Run Estates. We've recently got a grant that allows us to convert the lighting in this building and City Hall Utility Building to a more efficient lighting. And also, we're going to be building a solar farm. In the water, we've done some preliminary work on upper Owlsley Fork Reservoir. This would be a new reservoir for us. We need to meet with the college and come to some understandings there. We're currently wanting to loop the water line at Exit 76, and we still are trying to get the generator and pavement out at the water plant to clean those up. In the wastewater, we need to replace the pump station at I-75. That's the original pump station down behind the Artisan Center. When that was built, when that was rebuilt in 87, we used the original wet well that was there. We used to have a wastewater plant down there. We used that wet well, and the concrete's just deteriorated. We can't hold the pumps in and things like that. We've got the tarel branch sewer line installation, and we need to get back in and do some more sewer line rehabilitation. We're working on getting camera. From the roof, now that the roof is fixed, we've had a lot of water damage at our office. We'll need to get that renovated and probably have some mold that we have to deal with. We are in the process of converting all of our electric and water meters to an automatic read. We're about 2/3 of the way, a little more than 2/3 of the way done with that. 9,600 meters, and we've still got about 3,000 left to convert. That, of course, will eliminate meter reading, meter readers and stuff like that. It was a project that we originally started out to be a five-year project, I was told. It was a project that we originally started out to be a five-year project, I was told, and it held true, that once we got into it, you're not going to want to wait five years to get it all done. And so we have upped the pace, and we've only been at it about two years. And as I say, we're about a little over 2/3 of the way through. We are hiring a GIS person for ourselves, and we're going to try and get all of our mapping and everything, the utility infrastructure caught up. We are in sad shape there. And we still are working on transformer containment and a multi-storage building where the old sewer plant was next to the golf course. We've converted that to a storage yard, and we've got to complete some stuff on it. What does the future hold for the utilities? You know, it's in the hands of the city council as always. I mean, you all passed the rates. You've got excellent people down there now. This isn't about me leaving. The utility will run without me, I assure you. But it is about the fact that all these things that we're trying to do depends upon the rates and our rate payers being willing to help us. When we were, when we were just a sewer, we could expand wherever we wanted to go. As you saw earlier tonight, if a developer even in the, outside the city limits at that time, Dr. Kirby would always get mad at me when I would let it go outside the city limits. But that expansion of the sewer system resulted in a 3% to 4% growth per year. And so when we passed rates in 1985 and held those rates until 2007, and still generated the money that we needed to operate, it was mainly because we were expanding, the sewer system was expanding at a 4% click, and we were able to do it. Water and electric are different. There are lines drawn in the sand. You have a defined territory, and you can't step outside of that territory. They can't step in. We're surrounded by Southern Madison Water, the blue, and surrounded by Bluegrass Energy in the red. The only growth we're going to have in our system is if somebody tears something down and you put it back up unless the college decides to go crazy and start selling off, you know, a bunch of their land for the development and stuff like that. So what we need to do is to become less of a sales company and not depend so much on the sale of electric and the sale of water, but become a service company. And we offer the service of electricity and the service of water. And of course, sewer's always been a service, so it shouldn't be too big a stretch to do that. And consequently, what that is going to mean is, is that customer rates are going to need to, the, geez, I've lost the word. Service charges. The service charges are probably where you're going to have to adjust, start adjusting your rates. Who knows what Kentucky Utilities is going to do with the electric rates? Who knows what anybody's going to do with the electric rates, you know? So if we're passing those through and we're trying to keep the integrity of our system up with customer service charges, I think that we'll end up a much better utility. That's it. I'm sorry that it went longer than Mr. Gilbert wanted it to, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
One question, Donald, about rates. Our rates are comparable to other cities around.
We, our rates are, our rates are slightly below Bluegrass Energy. But KU, which is in Richmond, has a little bit lower rates than we do here. But yes, we're all, we're all very comparable there. We are, water rates, we are on the high side in the, what we call the Bluegrass Add Region or this central Kentucky region. We are on the high side there. We are on the low side in sewer. If you average the two out, we really are right about average in water and sewer.
Thank you.
Third question's for Mr. Blackburn.
I had one. It's just because of the way you presented it, I thought I would ask. You said we treat about, was it a billion, a billion gallons of water a year? Is that right?
We did pass this past year.
This past year. And we also processed about the same quantity through the sewer treatment plant.
Yes.
But 40% of our water that was treated sold to the two districts. So I was just thinking, why did the two match? Is it because we're processing a lot through the sewer that's outside our water sales there? Is that, of course, groundwater or something?
Groundwater, possible storm water. And if you recall, one of our projects is to come back up with rehabilitation. We did that about 10 years ago and got a lot of water out. Lines get cracks in them. They're underground. Water will seek the least resistance, so it'll pop into the line if it can and then travels down to the plant. So yes, the difference between what we get from the houses, business industries, whatever, and what the total was is going to be what they call INI, inflow and infiltration. And that's, and that's why it was purely coincidental that the two numbers were so close. If it had rained more, there'd have been a whole lot more at the plant.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Very good. (APPLAUSE). I think you've seen the long version of the.
It's the short.
You didn't introduce your helper, Donald.
Stacy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have to contribute a lot of my friends, my daughter Stacy, so.
Any department head like to add to the written report?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Van Winkle.
I'd like to introduce to the council tonight one of our newest employees with the city. This is Robin Adams. Robin started Monday in the codes office. She's our new administrative assistant, and she comes from the Gear Up program at Brea College for the last six years. Very good-looking resume. I think we'll get a lot of good stuff in the future, and she hopes to stay with us a long time. And hopefully, that will happen, and we're excited to have her. So I want to introduce her to the council, and she'll be here for a few minutes afterwards if you'd like to meet her. Would you like to say anything?
No, I'm excited.
Welcome, Robin. City Administrator, do you have anything else to add to your report?
After talking for an hour, I won't bore you too much. The, one comment that I would like to make, that we have had an 18-year relationship with Rumkey, with the collection of solid waste in the city of Brea and their representative here this evening. And Stacy's been our contact for that 18 years, and we have appreciated everything that they have done. One of the things that was not mentioned here this evening, we did not base our decision to change on price, but then after you evaluated the companies, their ability to do the work, the equipment that they have, participation in our recycling program, stability, financial stability of these companies, and it came down to a price structure. And with the bids that we had, and that was accepted by the council by Waste Connection, all service representative levels of representation in the city, whether they're commercial or residential, will receive a decrease from the cost that they are paying now on the standard rates. Now, if you, there's some choices out there that individuals can make, such as backdoor service and those kinds of things that may add to what you'll see published. We will publish the new rates in the paper. We will be meeting with Waste Connection beginning in the morning, I think, for a few minutes to talk about transition and how things are going to take place. We need to notify our residents of the new company, where they can be reached, how our new company will be sending out their billing rates or the bills. So there's a lot of administrative work within, in 27 days now that has to be done. The new contract begins March 1st, and so we will be running ads in the paper. Hopefully, we'll have a better breakdown at our next council meeting as to how this transition is going to take place. And as I have cautioned each of you, and I have cautioned our new partner, garbage touches every person in the city. This is the one thing that we have to do and do it right. So we do form a new partnership. We'll be working with Waste Connection, and we will see that this transition is as smooth as it possibly can be. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Stone? Thank you, sir.
I just have one comment. Yes, it was yesterday. Seems like longer than that. I attended a briefing of three Pentagon officials to the, both the CD Cab board and also to county elected officials. There were really two, I think, issues that prompted that their appearance and updating. One was the replacement of the Aqua representative that we currently have had, Kevin Flam. And the second was a financial issue termed a non-McCurty breach in the revenue needs of that program. The briefing, I think, swaged concerns that our CD Cab and elected officials had over those two issues. The non-McCurty breach was a concern that the triggering of the enhanced review because the spending of the Aqua program, the demilitarization program, was exceeding somewhere 20%, 30% triggers this bureaucratic Pentagon review, and there was concerns that that might throttle back what was, what momentum the Aqua construction and demilitarization program was reaching. The report of the Pentagon officials to both the CD Cab and to the elected officials in effect said that this is probably a good event because the, basically, the money that is coming to that program is being supervised by Senator McConnell, who's in a well-placed position to make sure that that revenue stream continues. But is being rocked and scrutinized because of the national concern for debt. But the non-McCurty scrutiny will allow the available money to be assigned to the appropriate years and achieve maximum use. The Pentagon people were explaining, and that even though that it does look like there's going to be intense bureaucratic scrutiny for a period of time, that the result, for many reasons, will be that the money will be available and it will be used better when it's needed to complete the program. Nothing is set in stone, but it looks positive at this time. And the second choice, the second issue, the choice of a replacement for Mr. Flam, the Aqua representative, the demilitarization representative, there was some concern that the openness, the communication, the receptivity of the Army and the process might be lost. The Pentagon representatives stressed that they were acutely aware of the concern of the Madison County citizens, but more importantly, the Kentucky delegation and, i.e. Senator McConnell, in Washington, were concerned that there be this continuing good relationship exhibited by the replacement. And so they said that high on their list would be to have transparency, openness, communication, cooperation with the new director. So with those reports, I think both the CD Cab and the elected officials felt that the future of the Aqua program was good and was moving well, and that despite the bumps that, and questions that were coming up at this time, that the long-term possibility for the program, future for the program, was good. Please don't ask me any questions. I've just run out of the script that I was given. And with that, move to council comments.
Mr. Burnside?
Mr. Mayor, once again, I know that we're changing our solid waste franchise. I do want to thank Rumkey for their 18 years of service to this city. It's like losing a family member because I know many of the drivers have made friends with the citizens of Brea. So I want to thank you as we do move forward and wish you all the best as well. So it was not an easy decision, believe me, but, you know, sometimes you have to make those tough choices, so.
I would like to say on behalf of myself and my company, Rumkey, it has been a privilege and a pleasure to service you all for the past 18 years. And we hate to leave, but we'll stay in touch, okay? And you guys take good care of them.
Ms. Kirby?
You know, comment.
Mr. Little?
Comment.
Ms. Farmer?
I'd like to welcome Robin Adams to our Brea family. And I think you'll be, this is a great place to work as well as a great place to live. And I too would like to thank Rumkey for their service over the past 18 years. It's been exemplary, and someone has a lot of big shoes to fill. And people are going to be watching, I think, very closely, so hopefully, things will move swiftly and well as far as our customers are concerned. But Rumkey has done a fantastic job, and we've been very happy, I think, with your service. So I'd like to thank you and welcome our new provider.
It hasn't been a trashy relationship, then?
No, it's not been. It's been a wonderful relationship.
A wager?
Yes.
(LAUGHING). It's rubbish. Mr. Fields?
Thank you, Rumkey. And I'm glad to welcome Mr. Jennings back, our money man.
Welcome back.
Mr. Blando?
No comment there.
Jennings, any rebuttal?
Well, I was going to say it's good to be back, so I'll say that. And also, just a comment on Rumkey. Others have made those comments, but I've been on the council now for about 15 years and have been through some of the bidding and negotiations when Rumkey was selected and when they were continued, and it's been extremely positive. And they did a great job, and I've never heard the first complaint about Rumkey's service. And I'm looking forward to Waste Connections and Legacy taking it over. And I hope in five years that we can say even better things about you all, so. So we're going into it positive and very thankful for what we've had too, so thanks.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Tinsley. Bill, sir?